It's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Somerville School Committee meeting to order on December 7th, 2020 and President of the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A S18 and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Kurti Tony's declaration of emergency dated March 15th, 2020. This meeting of the Somerville School Committee will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the city of Somerville website and local cable access government channels, SCAT. And with that, we'll have a moment of silence and a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Skipper, will you call the rule, please?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Gretchen? Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mayor Kurti Tony? Mr. Green?
Here.
Ms. Barish?
Here.
Ms. Paton?
Present.
Dr. Ackman?
Here.
And Ms. Norman?
Here.
You have a call.
Thank you. So as we've been doing lately, the last several months during this pandemic and these unusual times, as we've been starting the meeting with the mayor giving a presentation. Mayor Kurti Tony, are you with us? I know that he has been under the weather today. The other item I was going to take out of order was, I know several of you are here for the update from Athletic Director Stanley Vera. Superintendent Skipper, do you have any word from the mayor if he will be coming soon, or whether we should kick off with Athletic Director Vera?
I'm going to ask Ms. Santiago, do you, sometimes the mayor comes in like I do, he comes in as the attending, he has to be switched over. Can you just check? And if not, I would suggest that we can either start with the student reps, or we can start with Mr. Vera, and then we can go back to the mayor.
Okay, I can confirm that he is not in as an apt and deep, but I just sent him the invitation again.
Okay, I spoke to him about an hour ago. So I would like to go next to the report of the student reps, and then we will go to the general updates with the mayor and Athletic Director Vera. So with that, Brian, I know is, oh, there's the mayor. Mayor, would you like to kick off this meeting with a presentation right now?
Well, when we hear the student reps, then I can speak.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
That's okay.
Natalia and Brian, I saw you both out there. The floor is yours, my friends.
Hi, everyone. I'll be starting today. So the first thing I wanted to report on was the Somerville Community Fridge that is now open. It is located at 35 Prospect Street, Somerville. So volunteers over the weeks have helped put this community fridge together. This fridge gives many people who are less fortunate than others an opportunity of acquiring food, because food is something we all need, and not everybody has the same opportunity of acquiring it. People can grab and go, along with contributing to donating food. Also, donations are greatly appreciated at all times. And the Somerville Community Fridge also has an Instagram, which is @SomervilleCommunityFridge, where there is more information about it, too. The next thing I wanted to report on was that the Ryan Harrington Family Foundation provided eight Thanksgiving baskets for Somerville High School families throughout the past week. Also, another thing, that the National Honor Society had a food drive that not only provided food for the families and food pantry, but also raised over $1,300 for a toy drive. More specifically, the money was donated to the Clarendon and Mystic Housing Authority Toy Drive. Along with that, I wanted to add on or report on the student election that we mentioned a couple of weeks ago. This is an update. Everything went well. Students voted, and it was a great turnout. Natalia, she is the Class of 2022 Secretary, and I also ran, and I won as the 2023 Vice President. So that's all I have for today.
Well, that was a lot. First of all, congratulations to you and Natalia. Natalia, do you also have a report?
Yes, I do. Hi, everyone. This is Natalia. So I wanted to report on clubs. So some clubs have started, of course, online, and one of them is the Board Game Club. So I guess, I don't know much about it, but I've heard that some people have signed up for it, and perhaps maybe, I think they started their first meeting. And then, so the other thing is that the houses are now working on stockings for students, which provides students with gift cards, hygiene products such as toothpaste, toothbrushes, scarves, hats, socks, and other items to keep students warm and, I guess, clean during this time. And then the Somerville High School Science Department partnered with Biogen and the American Public Health Association to create an assembly for students to participate in and get some more information. And then specifically for the 11th graders, hold on. So for the 11th graders, Somerville High School plans a series of college and career virtual events. So a new series of virtual college and career planning events for 11th graders will provide students with this opportunity to connect with the Somerville High School College and Career Readiness Team. I'm sorry, my mom is calling me. I'm sorry. Don't worry. And then I have to report on, so I've been working with Mr. Lagambina to take out a survey for students who do have that Remote 7 block, to hear their opinions, not just my own, but the entire Somerville High School student body. So I plan on releasing this survey as soon as, I think, Wednesday or Thursday, just to get everybody's opinion. And I believe I had something else. Oh, yes. So the CTE ambassadors have been chosen. I'm very lucky to be one of them for the dental program, and our first meeting will be this Wednesday at 12:00, hopefully to get to know my other, like, fellow ambassadors and see what information we can get out to the eighth graders about the CTE program.
And does that conclude your report?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Well, I just want to say, Brian and Natalia, you continue to amaze. The amount of information and the amount of activity that both of you do and what you report back from the schools is incredible. I had a couple of clarifying questions, if you would indulge me. Brian, so you were talking about the community fridge needing food. Are there certain types of food that they are looking for and certain things that they're not looking for? And if you don't know the answer, that's fine. If you could just say again where it is, we can get more information for anyone who would like to make a donation.
Yeah, so the free food is located at 35 Prospect Street in Somerville, and it's preferably taking canned goods, dairy products, things that are perishable. I don't know anything else. On their Instagram, they do have more information. They have, like, certain guidelines, guidelines being, you always have to wear gloves and masks while preparing food, wear a mask and put on tan sanitizer before opening the fridge and putting things on the shelves, remain six feet apart at all times when visiting the fridge, always sanitize any and everything you can before donating. Acceptable donations are refrigerated goods, produce, pre-made meals, pantry goods, hygiene products/ toiletries, not acceptable alcohol, medicine. They want us to avoid raw meat, half-eaten food, and unlabeled pre-made food. Those are all not acceptable. For stocking tips, they said that first in, first out, so newer items should be placed farther back to avoid food going bad, and all items must be properly sealed, so checking for spoiling, rotting, and trash in around the fridge and pantry. So yeah, I know that they have people who check up on the fridge, and they volunteer to go and check up on the fridge, like, and see how it's doing. So it's always clean, organized, and, like, accessible for everybody.
Thank you. That is great. And then Natalia had a question for the stockings for students. Is that something that community members can contribute to, or is that something that is being taken care of within the high school? Do you know?
I think it's something contributed by the high school, but I could look into maybe other people providing things for students who I need.
Okay, that would be great. And if you, if you thought of it, if you could, just shoot me an email, and I can help get that word out, that would be very helpful. And well, congratulations to both of you for winning your elections and taking on more responsibilities and greater leadership roles. And I love when people run, students run for office, and I always think, keep an eye on the school committee or city council positions down the road, because there is no one who knows the schools better than our students. So I want-
Don't forget, yeah, Madam Chairperson, they can, they can keep an eye on me.
Did any of, any school committee members have a question or a comment, or superintendent? Did you want to say anything?
I wanted to echo your comments, Madam Chair, that, you know, Brian and Natalia have both, they've created a Google Doc where they have sort of their running list of the topics that they're going to cover, extremely organized and just very detailed. So it's a pleasure working with both of them, and I know that Principal Lagambina feels the same.
Thank you so much for that, and thank you, you two. You're welcome to stay. The mayor's going to give an update on where we're at in terms of the buildings, and then Athletic Director Stanley Vera is going to be here. So if you want to stay, you're welcome, and if you want to go and start your homework or have dinner, you're welcome to do that, too. So thank you again for joining us. Mayor Kurti Tony?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson.
Yes, we can hear you if you want. I don't know if you want to kick on your camera or not.
I am, I am dealing with a physical, medical issue with my right eye, and it's difficult to look at this, and I apologize to you and the board and the community members and the public. I'm going to keep my camera off, and it's going to be difficult for me to last the whole night. I will listen to public comment, but it's just very uncomfortable and painful. But I wanted to be here, especially since Rich Raish, the Director of Infrastructure Asset Management, is ill and cannot be here tonight. So I'm going to get briefed as an invitation, and I would ask any specific questions can be emailed to him, or I'll try to get into some, but I'm a little uncomfortable, but I want to try to get this out, and if I can get a sheer screen.
Mayor Kurti Tony, will you be sharing the presentation, or would you like me to share it?
I'll do it. And I, my seat, you can see my screen, folks?
Yes.
Yes.
And I apologize. And I'm going to do my best under the circumstances. Thank you. Appreciate all those in attendance, all those looking. And if you have any other questions, feel free, as always, to email, obviously, in the school department, by myself, as well. So my update will be relatively short tonight, and I do want to stop by reiterating our framework to, excuse me, reopen schools safely. You know, our overriding goal for everyone, our, not just the city administration, school departments, school community council, as a community, is to reduce cumulative risk associated with bringing students and staff back into school buildings. As we are now in the resurgence of a pandemic, reminded that the details matter how we conduct the activities, especially coming back to school when community spread is not just trending in the wrong direction, but accelerating. So there are five key mitigation measures, and we've discussed all of them at length in these meetings, airflow system improvements for the buildings, a robust COVID-19 testing program, social distancing, which, you know, reduces the density of people in the buildings, you know, personal protective equipment, the PPE, and health and safety protocols as well. It's important to remind ourselves that all the mitigation measures work together to reduce the risk of transmission in the schools, and the pillars of any safe, in this case, our plan for a safe school reopen. I will focus on airflow improvements tonight. We now have contracts for all three building groups that are being executed, and we have received initial schedules for the Group One and Group Two buildings. And we expect to receive the schedules for the Group Three buildings by the end of the week. And I know this seems unethical, it is. This whole process of how we use emergency procurement and how we try to reconcile that, where work plans and design and project goals usually takes months and months, and we're, and we're really reducing that timeline. So while we're doing that, we do not want to make mistakes. But for reference for you, we all know the Group One is Argenziano, that one on West Somerville Naval School, and two is East Somerville Community School in the Mads, and Group Three is the Healy, Winter Hill, and Kennedy. As you know, we learned in mid-November, and we have paid attention to this, because it's just hasn't been in this year, but across the realm, that equipment shortages, in particular of what are the MERV 13 and higher filters, are in demand, and that demand has caused a production and manufacturing delays with the later opening of the Group One schools past our target date about December 3rd. So the schedules we received last week show that the lead time for the filters continues to increase, and our contractors are currently estimating completion dates for the schools in March. Now, that lead time expansion is not good. I mean, we've seen this type of thing before. As I speak to colleagues across the Commonwealth and other jurisdictions, just that sampling alone gives a good hint of how high demand these materials are, and not just in the public sector, private sector as well. So in light of this disappointing news, within our framework and the parameters we have set the safety, we have pivoted our internal resources to pursuing every possible approach that will get our highest need students, this is working together with the school department, meeting the goal to get our highest need students into the schools as soon as possible. So this effort centers around our airflow improvement plans. That's important. So first, I want to be clear. To bring as many students back as possible to the schools, we need to implement the full course of permanent airflow system improvements that we have worked with our partners to design and bid. That is critical. So these improvements fall into four K categories. There are ventilation, filtration, humidification, and disinfection. And to, really to accommodate our highest need students in the short term, however, we can safely reoccupy the buildings without the humidification and disinfection improvements, both of which are scheduled to take longer to implement than ventilation and filtration improvements. We cannot reoccupy the buildings without, without the ventilation and filtration improvements, however. They are, they are the most critical parts of the airflow system improvements mitigation measure. The filtration improvements are driving the schedule delays. They are in high demand across the spectrum in communities and jurisdictions and in private sector around the country, not just the region. And therefore, the delay, they're also the driving the delay in reopening schools. So here's what we're doing. We are exploring to reduce this delay, turning over, we're turning over every stone to see if we can shorten the lead time, the MERV 13 or higher filters. This is where, we're in close contacts with contacts I have developed, relationships we have formed over the years with major contractors and developers to reach out to those industries and production sites. And we're working on a plan right now to redeploy, and if necessary, to procure additional portable filtration units. By reducing the time necessary to complete the filtration improvements, our goal is to open schools earlier. Now, we will not be able to do this for every school, but we are actively working on a detailed plan that will reopen at least some of the schools before March. The goal of this plan, again, is to get our highest need students into our schools as soon as possible. The plan will take into consideration the availability of the filtration units, the schedule for ventilation improvements, and the availability of space in the new high school, which meets our low-risk airflow targets. We will provide a detailed update on this plan to the school committee at our meeting on the 21st, if you want. I want to remind everyone that these schedule delays are frustrating for all of us. It's really important. They are not shockers. This happens typically in any type of construction projects. However, we are in a COVID world. It's posing many uncertainties and trauma upon us, and it's frustrating because we have a plan. We believe that passed through the pandemic, it allows us to get our schools open and stay open because of the framework of our testing plan. But I do want to clarify and restate that we are working as quickly as we can, and that the people working on this project are truly dedicated and capable. So as an example of this, the schedule we received for the Group One buildings was sent to us by the contractor at 12:30 a.m. on Saturday morning, so late Friday night. Getting the schools open has always been and will continue to be our priority. I want to say that. It always will be our priority, but to do so safely. I could take some questions now, but any specific engineering questions, I will defer, and I ask you to submit them, and we'll get them to Rich Raish. I wanted to give an overview. This is something we're monitoring in real time. When we got the initial news about manufacturing and production and distribution delays, you know, we were always looking at alternatives in the event at that time and expanded. As I talk to other municipal leaders, mayors, and managers, and I hear from the superintendent from other school districts, this seems to be playing out across the spectrum, as I mentioned. So our goal is to work within our framework and our safety parameters we set forth, so that if we do anything to pivot, it is consistent with that parameters, but allows us to get our highest need students into schools in a way that's safe and in a way that's sustainable. So I'll stop there. Madam Chairperson, and I'm sorry if I'm not speaking as clearly as I usually do. I'm struggling a little bit with words because of some, just a little medical difficulty, nothing serious, but just a little challenging tonight. Thank you. I think you're muted.
I am muted. I was managing homework, too. So sorry about that. I think we've all done that at times. But Mayor, thank you for coming tonight when I know you are not feeling well. There are a few questions, and I would ask school committee members to be, have them ready, so we can, Ms. Barish, and then Dr. Ackman. Ms. Barish, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair. I wonder through you if the mayor can tell us a little bit about the status of the high school. Is that all moving along to plan? Are there any new delays or perhaps something's going to be ready sooner than we had expected?
We will not, we will not accept any surprises for the high school. We told the contractor that. Right now, it's on, as we previously presented. I know the superintendent and members of her team took a walkthrough. I will leave her to make her impressions on that, speaking to our team. And when I hear from the contractor, we are on schedule, as previously stated, and it's looking really good. I'll let the superintendent supplement what I answered.
Sure, through you, Madam Chair. So first of all, it is an incredibly beautiful building. When you walk through it, my heart is full for, for students and staff. You know, right now, we're being told that it is on schedule to turn over at the, you know, near the beginning of January. There will be things that we need to do to the building relative to how we use the building. So, you know, what students would be attending there, either temporarily or for the year, hallway signage and passage and relative to retrofitting for COVID, those are things that would need to be done. But I think the plan is still intact to turn it over within, like, the first week of January to the school department. The crew is working fast and furious. I was in there five days ago, and from five days until today, the amount of work that had been done, you could, it was visible. So I think the community will be very happy with that, with that building and that project. It's certainly going to be a legacy here in Somerville.
Thank you. I have Dr. Ackman, and then Dr. Phillips, and then Ms. Paton. Oh, Ms. Paton, your question was about the high school. I'm going to jump to Ms. Paton, because it's a follow-up on the same subject. I'm sorry about that. Ms. Paton?
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't mean to jump the queue, but I did have the question about the gymnasium at the high school. Do you know what the timeline is for that, or if there's going to be extended delay for the gymnasium?
Through you, Madam Chair. So my understanding is that they are working to the same schedule for turnover. I was in the gymnasium today. Floor is polished and leveled. They're laying the track, and they're in that process. So it looks as if they're working to have that be ready at the same time that the rest of the building would bar some, you know, some other, something sudden. Thank you.
Through you, if I may, Madam Chairperson, I can confirm that as well.
Fantastic. Dr. Ackman, and then Dr. Phillips, and Mr. Green. Dr. Ackman?
Thank you, Chair Norman. Through you, I assume this is to the mayor. You know, I know hindsight is 2020, and this has been an emergency, but there have been people who have mentioned that this is a problem that could have been anticipated. And I am wondering what we are doing to ensure that we are learning lessons from this, so that challenges like this, you know, hopefully a pandemic doesn't arise again, but when other challenges do arise, that we are taking these lessons and moving forward, especially as we have buildings that are older and are going to need, I'm sure, other retrofits.
So thank you. Very valid question for you, Madam Chairperson, excuse me, to Dr. Ackman. I'd submit, and it's funny, as I mentioned similar words today, I hope we learn from history this time. And while there's going to be a tremendous amount of opportunity for Monday Morning Quarterback, and I think we should do it, and understand whether it's a pandemic or other crises, how do we respond as a municipality, as a school district, as a Commonwealth, and so does the nation. On this particular issue, I'm not sure what we could have avoided earlier, but if there are lessons to be learned, we will accept those lessons with grace. I think we all, I think it can speak for all of us, and to the public, and say, we work hard to do everything right. We're certainly not going to get it right all the time, and I'm not going to say that we did anything wrong. I think we're guided by the right values, the right purpose, and our team, and I want everyone to have confidence in the team between the city and schools working on these things, and the schedule we're working on is incredible. But I also say that, although, you know, there's news, and, you know, anytime you have news or delays, it is frustrating. It won't be the only time it ever happens. I think our approach is flexible and adaptable, that we're ready to pivot and move as long as we do so in the parameters we establish. But yeah, I, we need to learn from what we do right and why we did it right, and even then, how we can end up better if we met our goals, and certainly if we have not met our goals. And there's a lot to be learned throughout this crisis, and I hope I'm not the only one on this school committee, and this community is not the only one that's willing to do that work.
Thank you. Dr. Phillips, and then Mr. Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I speak for a lot of people in the community when I say how incredibly frustrating and saddening this news is. Even if we hit our March deadline for getting our highest needs kids back to school, it'll be a year without being in-person school. We've got Desi breathing down our necks about getting kids back to school without any ventilation, it seems like, without six feet of social distancing. And here we are saying, no, families, you got to wait till March. I find it really sad. I find it especially sad because of the Harvard Healthy Buildings Report, it came- I find it especially sad because the Harvard Healthy Buildings Report that came out in June said, increase your air filters to MERV 13 or higher. I was really pleased when the superintendent told us, I think before the last budget cycle was done, that she had invested in reams and reams and reams of PPE. And I just wish that we had read the report and said, oh, MERV 13, let's buy them all now because we know, just like PPE, we're going to run out. But besides airing my frustrations, I do actually have a concrete question, which is when we say our high needs kids and we're going to try to get our high needs kids back to school before March, exactly which subpopulations are we hoping to do that for?
Superintendent, could you speak to that?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the minimum would be our special needs in ELL, high needs. I think we've identified priority populations among for pre-K to three. Grade three has been our, you know, always inconsistently recognizing that as younger students, it is much harder to access. Additionally, at the high school level, in addition to the special ed and the ELL, there are also our CT students, junior and senior year, who really need the hands-on within their shops. So I think this would be our minimal.
Thanks. Can I, can I ask a follow-up?
Yes.
Mayor, I don't want to step on your toes if you want to jump in.
Chair, did you want to make a?
Well, afterwards, I'll come.
So I know when Mr. Raish presented to us previously, he said, as soon as the high school came online, it met all the standards that we were worried about and the mods at the high school, all we had to do was flip a switch and they were ready to go. I know there's been talk about little kids and the high school and the mods and the stools, but I'm wondering, with those two spaces, do we have enough space for the priority subpopulations that the superintendent just listed?
Through you, Madam Chair. So that's exactly what we're looking at right now. The, each of the special education programs requires different kinds of space. And there are some buildings that are harder to replicate in other buildings, like the Capilano, for instance. So I think we're trying to look to see for particular specialized populations, how we would retrofit areas of the high school for that if, if in fact, we are not able to get those other buildings up in a more timely manner. So we have to sort of, at this point, put everything on the table and look at it in a lot of different ways to figure out how to be able to get the majority of our high need students back.
Mayor, through you, Madam Chair.
Connor, while I appreciate Dr. Ron Phillips' comments, I do, it's important to clarify. We didn't have a plan or even an assessment back in June of what needed to be done for each building. And I do want to state, we're not going to pass the buck because we were willing to take on whatever challenge we had to because we had to. Neither the Commonwealth nor Desi heeded the calls and requests of superintendents and city leaders for consultation and guidance on how to prepare our buildings or even what of any type of testing we should do. And it's only even been recently, the last few days, that they're recognizing that our pool testing approach is probably a model, which is why we're holding a statewide workshop. So I agree with the frustration. We did not push aside a report and not, not read any report, but we moved quickly. We had established a baseline, test them. And I understand that part of what we should learn and talk about is, and especially in a crisis like this, is there anything we could have avoided? But municipalities and school districts, as I've written and spoke about, have been dealt a hot mess and ended a hot mess a while ago. Not going to dwell on it now because we're all about trying to get our kids back and our schools safe, for our teachers, staff, and children and a way to keep them open in a sustainable way, even in the face of this pandemic. At the time, as I don't have to remind everyone now, more school districts are now shifting to remote because community spread is out of control. And this thing, we're all frustrated. I am too. We're going to get there. And I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And then Ms. Crepchen. And just quickly, I want to, and then I see Ms. Paton has another question, to let the members of the public know that if you want to see the slides from this presentation, it's under the handouts. It's the last document, the PowerPoint entitled School Committee and Today's Date. Sorry for that. Mr. Green?
Thank you. I'm not going to spend too much time echoing Dr. Phillips' frustrations or frankly, Ms. Ackman's concerns about what we should have done earlier. But I am curious going forward. If we're trying to meet anyone in earlier with the use of portable filtration devices or whatever we're end up using, I am mindful of the fact that other districts have been using this equipment for quite some time. So what is, why do we believe we'll have better luck getting that equipment than we will the permanent filtration equipment that we have been asked for? And what are our plans? We can't get those things.
Well, Madam Chairperson, these are fair questions. Let us explore these avenues. We are getting some feedback from industry leaders and we're, you know, let me use an example. One of the things we are looking at is if we are in a better position to get our schools up and running in another school district for me, who is looking for the similar supply from this distributor or manufacturer, can we jump in the queue? Why does that equipment have to wait in the bay? And so that's the type of work we're doing now. I can't tell you for certain what equipment will be available when. I think these are fair questions and we will be prepared to respond to them in the near, in the upcoming days.
Do you have a follow-up there, Mr. Green?
Yes. And I guess, in light of that, I'm struck by what seems to be a weird tension. Either we think these temporary things are, and these portable filtration systems are sufficient, in which case I come back to why didn't we order them over the summer? Or we don't, in which case our question becomes, how do we convince people that this is safe? What have we been saying for a while? We need to do all the stuff to be safe.
I'll try to answer and I'll just repeat what I said. We were active diligently in our approach throughout the summer. And once we understood based on our assessments what we needed to do in every building, even in a condensed timeline, we moved as quick as possible to order what we needed to order. And we believe in the plan. The plan is solid. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Ms. Crepchen and then Ms. Paton?
Thank you. It probably goes without saying to say I echo the frustration that my colleagues have expressed. My question is related to one I've brought up in the past, but I'm just again wondering if some of these buildings that are close to being ready couldn't be used for a few students for a few things, somewhat like a few students have been meeting with a few teachers outside. Could that happen inside in a large cafeteria in some one-on-one ways? And related to that, I know that the after-school was pushing for the ability to come inside to some of the schools to warm up for a few minutes during the outdoor programs. And I'm just wondering if there was any answer to that question for them.
I will try to answer. I don't know if the superintendent wanted to start off.
Certainly, through you, Madam Chair. So relative to the question about the after-school, that is something that we're currently working on with the, you know, city facilities department to be able to allocate what spaces. It'll likely be specific classrooms that the students would be able to go to for those kinds of warm-up breaks. So yes, we are in the process of trying to come up with a plan for that so that it's very clear who's going to be in what space and where.
Does that answer your, your question, Ms. Crepchen?
That answered the second part of the question, but then I'd still love to hear the first part of the question, just in terms of general, if there's any possibility for some general use of some of the better, the buildings that are in better shape.
So I can just say and lead to the superintendent programming that we are looking, depending on what we mean by what population use in any scenario, how we can utilize any of the buildings, but within the parameters we set forth. I know that's very general. But I think what's important in anything we do, especially now, is always to continuously probe and challenge our assumptions and look at what data and information has evolved since we've come over the last several months. Then I'll leave it to the superintendent to answer.
So I think, so again, I think this question is something that Mr. Raish and his team are looking at with particular attention to buildings that programmatically would benefit us to get online equipment, such as the Capilano, such as the mods. So I think that if there's to be a concentration and fast-forward of resources, if there's a limited resource and we're able to get it, are we able to get particular buildings that we know would help us to get the highest needs priority students back? That will be the, the goal. So yes, this question's being actively batted around and explored with Retraice's team.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Paton?
Thank you, Chair Norman, through you. It's either to the superintendent or the mayor. And thank you to my colleagues for all their thoughtful question and expressing the feelings of many in the community as well as myself about where we are. But I'm also thinking about how do we move forward? I appreciate the flexibility and creativity of the city and this very difficult circumstance. And I know it's very difficult to commit to specific building dates. But from a planning standpoint, I want to, best as possible, understand the landscape of buildings that we have, are we going to have available and approximately when they'll be available. So for example, it's my interpretation that it could be kind of a stretch, but as early as possibly January 11th, but it could be a little later, the high school will be available. There'll be a large state-of-the-art building that can design for 1,500 students, high school students, not elementary students, but high school students, should be ready, possibly January 11th, possibly a week later. We understand that we can't get exact dates. So that in theory gives six weeks. If students started on the 11th, for example, six weeks between then and the end of February, if you take out the one week of February break. So we have six weeks opportunity possibly. Again, this also is contingent on the administration being able to plan this. We understand that it's not like we turn on a dime. So like we say, we have the building and all of a sudden we can populate with kids. So there could be a potential to have six weeks. It could be five weeks. It could be four weeks, depending on the work that's required. And then with respect to the other buildings, our understanding right now, we're using the general date of March. And it sounds like we may or may not have access to them possibly earlier if there's, you know, a Herculean effort to get equipment earlier or if there's some decision to put in some temporary solutions that we may get kids in. So I'm just trying to understand the landscape of what buildings may be available and how much time that gives us for planning.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, so this is all the, this current piece of news is evolving. And so we're trying to shift our thinking as we look at the programmatic pieces of this, right? And how they fit together. I don't think that the groupings of the buildings differ too much, like in terms of order. I think the question is if there can be priorities of buildings in the groups. And if some of those, like for instance, the Capilano, if that's a building that can be prioritized because it serves our youngest students and it also serves on our ECP, ECIP side, our high need special ed students. It's hard to replicate that in another place. If we have to, we obviously will try to do that. But if we can bring that building and target resources to that building, then that would be, that would make a lot of strategic sense. So I think that, that with the high school, the question is, how many buildings can we do that for and in what timeframe? So there's also the disruption factor of situating classrooms and then having to resituate classrooms, if in fact, that is part of the equation. So, and these are the things we are also actively negotiating with our unions to talk about what this can look like and try to do some really good thinking about. So I, I think over, you know, to the mayor's point, I think over the next week to two, as we get more details from Retraice and his department in terms of temporary solution and permanent solution in the timeline, that will help us to be able to start to take the pieces and put them together. At this point, we're putting everything on the table to relook at it since it's, it's different puzzle pieces. But what has not changed is that we have a large group of priority students who need to be back in school. And so we need that to drive our strategic thinking with all hands on DAK City and District to do so and to do that in partnership with our unions so that we come up with the best solutions.
Thank you. And I just want to acknowledge the level of professionalism and effort from the administration, staff, building leaders to try to figure out this, puzzle isn't even a word for it. There must be a better word. This is so complicated and, you know, there's been a lot of stops and starts. And I'm just very thankful and appreciative and acknowledging that, you know, we're coming into a strange time with winter break and it'll be interesting how it all comes together. But thank you.
I would also, I would also just like to say that through the city's efforts, we've been able to operationalize the testing for the staff who are in the buildings on a regular basis. And that is to begin on Wednesday. And I think that's an important step forward because it helps us to be able to, to do this, even though it's 300 or 350 staff, it allows us to look at those protocols, run through them so that as we put students to that, we've got a lot of lessons learned in the bank on it by starting with a smaller group of individuals. So that is something that will begin on Wednesday. And we will be doing that at the Argenziano on a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday weekly schedule.
And kudos again to the team for pulling that off. You guys did that on a dime. We were having this conversation the end of last week and here we are Wednesday and it's going to happen. So bravo and thank you.
Madam Chair, I just need to, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'll wait, not, I'll wait. I do want to say, I think the, we're doing this in a concentrated timeline. So if you can't lose a minute or an hour, it's like days and weeks. And the goal is to always be brutally honest about where we are and what we're concerned about, what we know and what we don't know. That can be very, I know that is very frustrating and causes a lot of angst for folks, especially parents, teachers, and not just members on the school committee, but ourselves as well. I will say we're hopeful some of the things will turn in the right direction, but we are not waiting to see that happen. We don't have time to maneuver. We have very little time, if any time, to maneuver now and we have to be ready for any scenario. So that's why we'll have better information in every day that unfolds. More accurate, when I say better, more accurate. And hopefully it's better in the better direction. But the purpose of the update tonight is to tell you where we are and be very clear what we're concerned about. I do have a slimmer of hope that some of the issues around supply and distribution will pivot our way, but I don't know that tonight for sure.
Thank you for that contribution, Mr. Green, and then Ms. Crepchen. Mr. Green?
Thank you. So there's been a lot of talk about what could happen and what might happen. I would love it if we had some degree of understanding of what, how much is it that could happen, maybe so. For example, like, sure, I think we feel pretty confident the high school and the mods can be up before March. What do we think of the honest percentage chance of any other buildings being ready before then? So that, you know, we're trying to strategize over what to do with these buildings. We actually have a clear sense of what our assets could possibly be.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak to that?
Well, we're working on those scenarios, you know. You know, we're trying to align, not just, I mean, what, how do we serve the population we want to serve with the priority we need right now? The high school is going to be ready sometime in January. Can we, what do we need to do to serve that population? I think the superintendent can correct or supplement what I say. And what will the time take to do that? And they've always asked us, how much will that be earlier than any worst-case scenario? We're looking on time right now.
Ms. Crepchen, I believe that will be the last questions.
Thank you through the chair to the superintendent. And I don't expect that you have an exact answer to this, but I feel like it's a question out there that people may be asking. Do you have a sense in the last few weeks of how many students have unenrolled due to continued remote learning?
Through you, Madam Chair. I mean, I check the enrollment on a daily basis. Through Madam Chair, I mean, I check the enrollment on a daily basis. It might be 10 to 20 students. What, 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 what is difficult is that we probably had 10 or 20 enroll. So our enrollment fluctuates, so it's not necessarily the same.
Got it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just have one thing. Will you, you know, I know we said, well, good luck formal update on 21st. We have any information, certain good or bad tomorrow or the next day, we'll let people know well if they answer that. As soon as we have it, it is firm. And hopefully it's the former and not the latter, the good part. So.
We, we hope we're the same. Just so everyone knows, the next school committee is in two weeks, which is the 21st. And so we, we would be very appreciative of any concrete information that is generated or come to to be known between now and then. And certainly on the 21st, again, we will start our meeting with an update on where we're, we are at. But any information, I mean, this is, has been difficult for administrators and our teachers who continue to teach every day. I know the city is, is working on it and foremost, it is difficult for our students. And that is, I think that it's hard not to to really feel it. And I appreciate my colleagues' questions and concerns. And, and I do appreciate students and staff and families, the amount of work that is going into day to day, while also planning and replanning and planning again. So I very much welcome any concrete dates and I appreciate you not putting another date out that it is not actually firm. Because I think the only thing harder than pivoting is, is thinking one thing and then another. So as real informations, we get those real days, as the mayor has said, we will get them out to the public. So Mayor Cretatoni, I know you are not feeling well and I appreciate that you have stayed as long with us. And again, if anyone is looking for the PowerPoint presentations, they're in the handout. I know a number of members of the public are very interested in getting an update on athletics. So I'm going to take that item out of order. So out of the superintendent's report, the athletics update, Superintendent Skipper, do you want to frame this update for us, please?
Sure. So I'd like to welcome Director Vera and Michelle Kelly, who is our athletic trainer and health coordinator. And, you know, we've been working with our GBL colleagues to try to see what direction the league is going. Back when MIAA made the decision to create a different term for what would have been the fall sports. The winter sports were sort of always in limbo to, to see what would happen relative to where the virus was. And so in talking with Stan, we felt it would be good to give an update to school committee relative to what the other GBL districts are thinking. There are three sports, both for boys and our young women that are up for discussion about when we would do them, if we would do them. And then I think the intent would be on the next school committee meeting, we would like school committee to weigh in formally on, on their thinking about our winter athletics. So with that, Stan and Michelle, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor Cretatoni, Superintendent Skipper, and all the school committee members for having us tonight. Before I get started about winter sports, just a couple of updates. I, I've learned now during the pandemic that I try to start every meeting with a couple of positive things, just so people are in a good place. The first thing is we actually do have a varsity team playing right now. This year, we started an esports team, which has been fantastic. It's 18 students who are doing esports for San Antonio High School. I, I was told yesterday as an update that we're in fourth place. I have no idea if that's good or bad, to be very truthful with you. But I know that they are very involved in the playoffs start next week. And it's been a monumental success, our first year in esports. So again, it gives, it gives opportunities for our students to play a sport virtually against other students from other schools. We're in a league and it's, it's been fantastic. So that's been great. And then with the, with the real efforts of Michelle Kelly and our athletic staff, we were able to put together this fall, a fall conditioning program, six weeks for all of our fall sports athletes. And it really went on without a hitch. You know, it was really, it was, it was, it was done properly under all the guidelines and safety measures. And I can tell you from, from day one to the final day, it wasn't just great physically, but it was great mentally for our kids to reconnect. It was done outdoors over at Dilboy. And I can tell you, it was, it was great just to see them every day and to see them partake in something that they really lacked and really wanted. So just those two things, those two updates, getting into, to winter sports. And again, Michelle Kelly being here, just, just quickly, she has been such an amazing resource. I can tell you, and I'm biased and I understand that, but I, I feel very lucky to have Michelle as our athletic trainer here. I think she's the best in the state and she's been part of the sports medicine task force with the MIAA throughout the pandemic and has been a real resource in helping with modifications. And I could, there's not enough time today for me to tell you everything Michelle does. So she's been an amazing resource. And she's here to answer any questions regarding health and safety that you may have after the fact. But just going with winter sports, so under the strict guidelines of obviously the EEA and DESI and the recommendations of the MIAA and the Greater Boston League, we are proposing that we hopefully can start winter sports in January. I think the target, target date that Michelle has talked about with other trainers in our league is ideally, we're looking at that January 11th date, that Monday as a potential to start and then ramp up. That's the hope. I'm going to go through just a, a bunch of bullet points that kind of really speak to what we're looking to do with winter sports. And, and again, understand folks, it's a, it's a fluid situation. We have, we have no, we, we know for a fact probably that we're going to have changing parts as we go along the way. Things will change, but we have some flexibility with roster sizes. We also have some flexibility with dates regarding starting and ending. So there's some flexibility there. So nothing is fully in stone, just so you know. So just real quick, some of the bullet points. We are looking to do a superintendent skipper spoke to, we're looking to do boys and girls basketball, boys and girls ice hockey and coed swimming. Those are the sports that we are looking to implement, starting in January regarding winter sports. Our, our roster sizes are very specific given to us by the MIAA. Boys and girls basketball, a max of 15 per roster. Boys and girls ice hockey, a max of 20 per roster and 18 for swimming. We are looking to do the tryouts and a ramp up that first week. So essentially it's getting kids in place, making sure we're staggering everything, making sure our facilities are up to, up to, up to code. And also making sure that everybody is following strict and enforced guidelines to make sure we're doing it properly. The idea is, once we, once we start the process, we're looking to do a limited varsity practice schedule and then a limited junior varsity practice schedule. And we're stopping there. We are not, the league was very adamant and very unified in knowing that we couldn't do a freshman team, that we couldn't do middle school sports. So we're strictly a varsity and JV schedule going forward. Medical clearance, and Michelle can obviously speak more of this, but medical clearance is essentially going to stay the same. They still have to get their physicals and it has to be over the last 13 months and it has to be updated. And it cannot be a telehealth physical. It has to be an in-person physical. Department of Public Health would not budge in that regard. So that's, that's again, very black and white for our students and their families to know. The schedule, the Greater Boston League felt like the ultimate goal was to do a 10 game schedule, very modified 10 game schedule. No MIAA tournament, knowing full well that we may not reach 10 games, that it might be seven games, it might be five games, you know, depending on what we're doing. And the, the concept was that we would, the schedule would go once a week on Saturdays with the potential of maybe a night game during the week. But really, we were focusing on that Saturday schedule for a lot of different reasons. And the idea was we'd play one school during that week. So not to cross over different schools and put other people in harm's way. And again, with the full intention, knowing that we may not meet that full 10 game schedule. But if everything went great and all the stars aligned, the ideal would be 10 games and then a, a league, a league championship during that February break vacation. We also came to the decision with, with everybody that we spoke to, whether it be the mayor, superintendent skipper, Principal Lacamina, that it didn't make sense because of some of the data we received regarding youth sports, it didn't make sense to have fans. I think we felt like a lot of the data surrounded some of the issues with the spread with congregating in lobbies after games, parents getting involved through no fault of their own, obviously, but we felt like for the safety of our, of our kids that having no fans in place was really the, truly the way to go. And then from a, from, to, to address that, that situation with parents, I know are going to be very frustrated, especially the parents of seniors who can't watch their kids play. We've worked with Channel 15 in San Diego, which is a real resource. And they plan on being in all of our games to stream those games live. So there'll be an opportunity for parents and families and grandmas and aunts and uncles to watch games without having to be there. I, I think it's a really important thing to note to everyone. And again, as I said at the, at the onset, there'll be, there'll be, it's a fluid situation. Things will change. We have some flexibility regarding rosters. We have some flexibility regarding dates, starting dates and ending dates. But the one thing I want everybody to truly understand is that if we don't have sports, and I, I understand your, I understand your reservations. I apologize. My, my two-year-old niece is a, is a ball of energy and she's running around. So I so apologize. She's, she's a little loud tonight. I apologize. I want everybody to understand that I know the reservations and the concerns about having sports. And I understand some of the optics behind it. But I want you all to understand that if we, if we don't have sports, and I feel very confident that we can do it and do it in a very safe way. If we don't have high school sports, understand that our students have options. So our basketball players will look at alternatives for, at AAU leagues. Our hockey players will look at club and travel leagues. And my concern is that if they do that, they'll be playing on all different kinds of teams. And my, my concern is that if we eventually go to hybrid and in-person learning, that if our, if our students, if our student athletes are out playing all these different teams, are they coming back to our school and putting everybody in real harm's way? That's one of my concerns about not doing sports. I think we can do it in a very safe way, knowing full well that if we have to stop, we will stop. If we have to quarantine, we will quarantine. We'll, we'll do it right. I, I just worry about the alternative if we don't do it for our students. And understand also that there are plenty of schools who are remote right now, who have approved winter sports. So I know from an optic standpoint, that also is a concern, but I, I need you to know that other schools are doing this. I don't want to be, again, I want it to be as concise as possible. I don't want to be any more long-winded. So myself and, and Michelle Kelly are open to any questions or concerns that you have.
Well, first of all, welcome. It is so nice to see both of you.
Thank you.
As always, you provide a wealth of information and I would ask if you could put a, a quick memo. It doesn't have to be fancy with all of that information to us so that we can get it out to school committee members because that was a ton of information.
Of course.
Want to thank both of you. Stan, you have come to the district and you have yet to have a gym, a year and a half into it. And creative creativity. And, and I mean, I know my son participated with the cross-country training, thinking outside of the box. And Michelle, I don't think people know and necessarily appreciate the depth of, and the breadth of your knowledge. Michelle has led our district in our concussion protocol and not just for our athletes. When our, or even our youngest ones have gotten concussions, she has been the one to evaluate and to help support them both in the schools. It has been a tremendous, I can't say enough about you, Michelle. And to see it has saved students' lives is, is true. It is not an overstatement. And my family is personally indebted to you when one of my sons broke his arm and, but didn't cry. And you looked at it and said, no, that's broken. You need to go to the ER now. I appreciate having you both here. I know there's a few questions. I also just wanted to make a comment, though, about the club team sports is that they're, they're very expensive. And not a lot of our students can actually afford to participate in club teams. And, and I, and I do appreciate the complexity of them being in other mixing with other populations. But it's also the importance of being able to offer programming, whether it is an organized sport or whether it's outdoor training within our city is important, not just from a health standpoint, but it is an access, an equitable access question too. So Mr. Green, I know you have a question and then Ms. Bearish, Mr. Green.
To fair, I have lots of questions. Let me start with, I think for me, which is the hardest question. You mentioned our facilities. What facilities are we using?
Sure. It's, it's a great question. Just from, from the sports, we're talking about basketball, boys and girls ice hockey and swimming. So boys and girls basketball, again, this is all contingent on the gym being ready on January 4th or early January. But that right now is something that's in play, as Superintendent Skipper alluded to, and we've spoken to the people over at Suffolk Construction. Boys and girls ice hockey would be over at the San Antonio Rank. That's been open throughout, I think from dating back to the summer, they've had programming. So that's been, that's been open and there are, there are protocols and guidelines in place over at the San Antonio Rank. And the same thing with the Kennedy Pool for our swimming, swimming team. That's been open and has had programming going on for quite some time now. So they also have their protocols. And also, I'm glad you brought this up. Just so you know, swimming would actually be probably the easiest of all sports to implement because we can actually do virtual meets with women, you know, so our, our team could be in one pool. And for example, meth could be in their pool and we can do our, our laps and, and get those results in. So that's probably the easiest of all sports to implement.
I have all sorts of, I'll get back in the queue.
Sure.
Okay. So then Ms. Bearish, then Ms. Peton, then Dr. Phillips, and then Mr. Green. I will put you back in the queue.
Thank you. And I am, oh, I was like, what was I going to ask about? Sorry. I, I was looking at the, the MIAA. Sorry, my brain is just.
It's okay.
The modifications that they're recommending, I think, that's the word I was looking for, modifications. And there was a lot in, in there about sanitizing protocols. And you should have sanitizer and you should have disinfectant wipes and every player needs to have lots of PPEs available, especially if they use mouth guards because presumably they're drooling. I totally get it. And I'm just wondering, and maybe I'm not sure who could speak to this, but particularly as Chair Norman mentioned, from an equity standpoint, I'm just thinking about whether students, student athletes would be expected to provide all of this on their own or whether the district is in a position to provide some of these items if we were to decide to go forward with sports.
Great question. I'm actually gonna, I'm gonna pass this over to Michelle Kelly, who has so much information. More than I'm sure we, we need tonight, but she'll be the perfect person to answer the question. Michelle.
Hello. Thank you. So great question. The mask changing will be important for the fact the mask will get wet due to the heavy breathing that occurs during aerobic activity. So right now, the coaches are looking at using their fundraising money to purchase a high quality mask from Under Armour or Mission Sports. They have, both have very good quality ones that are being used in the NCAA and professional sports. So the coaches are looking at that. We also have ordered a paper mask. Those are not as effective in terms of athletics. So we are looking at ways to make sure the athletes have masks. I will say for the 90 to 100 kids that showed up in the fall, everybody had a mask and multiple masks with them. We had masks with us and not once did anybody not show up with a mask or need an extra mask from our supply. We also have plenty of hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies. There'll be cleaning happening in between practices, during the practices, obviously during the gameplay. We have those protocols all written out already.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Peton?
Thank you, Chair Norman. To you, through you to the superintendent. Well, first I want to thank everyone for being here. We really do have incredibly talented athletic team that is really trying to make this work for our kids. But I also team that is really trying to make this work for our kids. But I also, I don't really know how to say this, because I don't want to be critical, but it's really hard to stomach the idea. Like, I don't want to think that some kids can do, if all our kids can't do things, then, then nobody should. But we're really pushing forward, and I think Stanley used the politically correct term of optics. We're really pushing forward to try to get things for our kids, after-school athletics. But what about, and this is probably for the superintendent, not for the athletic team, what about sports is so different than having kids in classrooms? Why is this something that we can move forward on, but we somehow can't have students in our classrooms? And I'm asking this because I'm guessing this is something that parents are really curious about. And again, I don't want to be in a place where we say, well, if we can't, you know, no one can have anything, because I know how particularly older students really need this physical activity, and they're really, really suffering. I have two teenagers in my house, and it's really hard. So I hope this question is coming across, not critical, but just inquisitive.
Sure. So, through you, Madam Chair. So I think in this case, we're talking about, in the case of the indoor sports, three specific scenarios, one of which is the pool, which, you know, to, to Stanley's point, you know, allows for virtual meets, and the pool has been open, and they have their own protocols. I think in the case of the ice hockey, the rink itself has its own protocols. So it really is about basketball. And I think that's the one that frankly, we have the most concern about. It is a gymnasium that is an incredibly large space. It would be only for the players, so no fans. So we're talking about a very large space that would house a very small amount of people with very strict protocols. So that is really different, I think, than what we've been talking about with the other building. Bringing kids into classroom, ventilation and the filtration is addressed, was not deemed as, for protocols of safety. Ice meets those protocols, the gymnasium included. So I think it really is, it is a very different scenario we're talking about here with just these three particular sports. I mean, I, I think on the, at the high school level, like, you know, I think most of our recreation and community schools activities were geared toward the much younger students for obvious reasons, which has really left the high school students without a fall sports season. And now it would potentially leave them without a winter one. And so to your point, as a parent, I think there is, there is some argument from parents who have children who are athletes. Let's see what we can do for them, and if we can get them into a safe situation, that it's controlled and does meet the standards, that that may benefit them socially, emotionally, in a year that otherwise they have a tremendous amount of losses.
Can I ask a quick follow-up, just a procedural question? So this is being introduced tonight as kind of a recommendation, and is this something that we're going to discuss tonight and have to kind of give our feedback, or is this something that we're going to discuss in the follow-up meeting?
Yes. Through you, Madam Chair, this is a great question. So I think this is really informational tonight, for school committee to hear it. There could really be changes between now and a week or two from now with the way the data is, that it really isn't even options. I think additionally, you know, Stan and Michelle are part of the larger groups of GBL and MIAA to be able to hear what other conversations are happening. And as those conversations happen, they will surely feel, you know, give that information to school committee, so that you can make the most informed decision come the next school committee meeting. I do think it would be worth, Stan and Michelle, just talking a little bit about the involvement with the other GBL districts and what they are thinking, because I think much like us, many of them are, you know, are struggling with the same concerns, the same optics issues, you know, the same feeling that there could be some value to it, but still concerned deeply with the safety of it. So I think, you know, we find ourselves in good company with the rest of, the rest of the GBL. So Stan, I don't know if you want to share just a little bit about some of the other districts in the league?
Yeah, I can tell you that, speaking to what superintendent Skipper just said, no school in our league has anything different than, than we have as far as the challenges they have, the concerns they have. I know all of them are meeting with their school committees this week as well, to go over the potential of putting winter sports into place. And, you know, speaking about ourselves, Malden, Revere, Metford, Chelsea, who's coming into the league next year, Everett, we have, they have all these different parts or different challenges, just like we do. Because in some cases, their facilities are not just at their school. There are different places like us. So they're trying to figure out if filtration, and they're trying to figure out roster sizes, and what makes the most sense. Some are remote, some are hybrid. So there's challenges across the way. So like I said earlier today, I don't think any of us go into this thinking it's going to be very smooth sailing, and we're going to go into the season, and it's going to be 10 games, and we're, everything's going to be, come out, it's not going to come out roses. We understand there'll be challenges, and there'll be issues that we have to tackle. But we feel very, very good about the team we have, not just at Somerville High School, but in the league. Our trainers are all on the same page. Our athletic directors are all on the same page. We talked, we always talk about a unified front and having very consistent policies to make sure that everybody understands that we are truly doing the same things. And, and knowing that we all have full flexibility in saying, hey, we're going to stop this for a couple of weeks, because there was a COVID case in Malden, or there was a COVID case in Metford, you know. So I think we all understand the challenges, but I think we're willing to tackle it. And even, folks, even if we, we get to the point of the season where we decide we can only play three games this, this winter, so be it. We play three games, you know. But it gives our, it gives the opportunity for our student athletes, in particular our seniors, an opportunity to experience their senior season, you know. So that's not the only reason, but that's a reason, you know. And like I said, there's challenges, but I think we're, we're willing, and we're prepared to, to tackle anything that comes our way. We feel good about it.
I think also, Ms. Paton, into the, to Chair Norman and the rest of the school committee, I think the other thing is, I think we also can think about these sport by sport, recognizing that some sports in their setup might be easier than others. And I think it's okay, some, you know, to also, if we feel that one of the sports really needs more consideration, that we can revisit that in January. You know, if we feel like particularly that we want to see what the facility piece is, and we want to be able to see what's happening with the virus, I think that's also an option. But I think the most important thing is that there's dialogue with the school committee, so that we can, we can start to have some, some meaningful conversation and get your questions answered in putting forth recommended.
Michelle?
Yes, Ms. Paton, just so you also are aware, the athletic trainers in the league, we've been meeting regularly. I mean, I think we text almost every day asking each other questions. But we have worked on a league-wise procedure guide. So all of us will be following the same cleaning, screening procedures, quarantine stuff. So we're all, we're all on the same page about what, what we need to do procedure-wise to deal with COVID-19, which is not happening in, in other leagues. And as far as I know, we are the only league that has all the athletic trainers in contact and discuss what's best for, for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions, but I can go back in the queue if there's more people.
And so right now, I have Dr. Phillips, then Mr. McLaughlin, then Mr. Green, and then Ms. Paton. And then I would like to wrap this part up and get back to our regular scheduled programming, and get back to the public comment and the rest of the agenda. Dr. Phillips?
Thank you, Chair. So I was a high school athlete. I'm the Wisconsin Small School State Champion Backstroker in 1992. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I very much feel where our students and our families are at, and how badly, I am sure many of them want to get out there to practice and to compete. I have a question related to HVAC and these competitions. So we've talked a lot about how HVAC upgrades are very important. We can't bring students back to school without these upgrades. I'm looking at the September 21st Town Hall reopening slides, where the Kennedy School is scored at a 2.69, which puts it at among the highest-risk buildings that we have for HVAC. I don't know what the HVAC system is at the ice rink. I'd be interested in knowing. We've been talking so much about how upgrading those systems is really important. We can't get students back into these buildings without these upgrades. So I'm a little confused about why we think it's safe to bring them back for sports in these buildings. Is there something I'm missing?
Through you, Madam Chair. So we would have to ask Mr. Raich, the, the, the hockey rink is a city building, as is the Kennedy Pool at this point. So I don't, I don't know the answers to those questions. I do know in terms of the gym, that Mr. Raich does have the data on that, because it is, it is too code. So he can provide that. But the others will have to pass that on to Mr. Raich, because we don't have that information.
Thanks. Yeah, it would be great. Like, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a decision on this without knowing that information. So it'd be great to take that by next week.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
My own, there we go. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Michelle and Stanley, for coming. Like Sarah mentioned, I'm a former youth athlete as well, not a very good one, but so will I. Football, wrestling, basketball got me through, especially the winter. It was a very tough time. And I am going to have to be a little negative. And I hate to say this, because I think we're talking to people who are working exceptionally hard under incredibly difficult circumstances, to better the children in the school. So I know, no, nothing against the individuals here who are working very hard. But we started talking about this, like, and I'm just, I'm having trouble putting my words together, because I'm dumbfounded by the idea that we're in the same meeting where we just learned school's not going to be open till March, we're saying that winter sports are going to start. And it just, it just kind of amazed me. It's like, you know, we're saying we can do sports in a safe way, but why can't we do schools in a safe way as well? I've heard several comments today, you know, that these kids will have options, they can go to other schools. We got an email just this week from a parent saying she's moving out of Somerville, because her kid can't go to school in person. They have very limited resources. Places like the NBA and the NHL, when they wanted to play sports, they put their entire league in a bubble and created an entire city to protect them. The NFL did not do this, and they have to routinely cancel meetings all the time. They cancel their games all the time, which is, they again have billions of dollars, unlike us. And we've already kind of acknowledged that we may have to cancel games, most likely because of infections. It just kind of really, you know, everything that's being said right now about protocols, I feel can be said about public education as well. Every city mentioned in this conference is a COVID hotspot right now. Everett, Chelsea, Revere, like, all these places are dealing with COVID, just like Somerville is. And they, we have no control over them. We can't say, like, we can't say for certainty whether Everett or Chelsea or Revere or any of these cities are going to take COVID as seriously as we are in this city. And it just really, you know, we've taken such an incredibly hard line on not reopening the schools. I don't know how we can possibly say that we're ready to safely implement sports, but not school. And if the gyms are so safe, as they said, maybe we should be teaching children in the gyms. If, if these open air areas are so high quality that we can play sports and have people breathing heavy on each other and being in intense competition, maybe we should use, maybe we should use the hockey rink to educate students, and we should use the auditorium to educate students. Everything we're saying about sports opening now and why it's okay can be said about the schools. And it's just frustrating to me. I've supported the city on their delays, because I think, you know, safety is the most important thing. But to me, this isn't about optics. This is, to me, a complete contradiction in our current policy. So I apologize for going on, but I'm really just kind of surprised that we're even discussing this.
Thank you for your remarks, Mr. McLaughlin. Next, I have Mr. Green, and then Ms. Paton.
So I want to first of all, say, I feel like perhaps President McLaughlin stole some of my notes, since a lot of the things I was, I was going to, that's what he just said. In particular, I am struck by the idea that it is somehow safer to play sports now, you know, given the current status of Massachusetts, than it was in the spring. And I have been critical of the notion that, you know, when we say that we can do things if people do X, I think at this point, we have nine months of evidence that says people don't do the right thing. And so why I'm confident, and, you know, having spoken to some of my colleagues in other cities, that they're, that they, they will put in the right protocols on one level, I feel like, given where we are, having faith that those protocols are going to be implemented with fidelity, without even error, seems rather bold on our part. And, again, I think President McLaughlin, my question is, if, you know, the city feels that the, you know, better than moral gym is a safe building to be open, is that the right use of that space? Is, if, is the gym, is that gym, we're trying to find places to put as many seats as possible, is using the gym as a gym the right use of space right now? I would be really convinced of that. Right now, I'm just not.
Thank you for that. Stan, did you want to jump in?
Just, just, just to, again, I, I think Michelle and I truly understand the concerns. I, I think the idea here for us was not to, to be in a building, particularly the new high school, during times when we might have classes. And I think the, the whole idea was it, was behind us doing Saturday competitions later in the day, practices. But also, in talking to superintendent Skipper, from a, from a safety standpoint, you know, I think this only happens, or we only have any kind of success, if we have testing in place, if we're following all protocols, we're following all guidelines. When, when we say we feel confident, that's what I'm alluding to, is making sure that we're doing all the right things, that our guidelines are in place, but also that our kids are getting tested, you know. And so, so we feel good about what's happening on, on our floor for practice, and what's going on in our games. I know it probably is not going to be perfect. I don't think anybody has any delusions that it will be perfect. We feel very confident, because, again, we were able to do something in the, in the fall, with fall conditioning, that we put a lot of time and effort into. And we felt like we followed all the protocols, we stressed the guidelines, we made sure of it, and things went off really well. So, and again, I understand it's indoors. I understand there are, there are different things we have to take into account. But by no means are we trying to say that we're more important than academics, that we should take priority. I think the idea here is, is to give our students, which other schools, other districts are doing, an opportunity to do something that they, they truly, truly need.
Superintendent Skipper, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I just also want to say that I think that this is actually a really appropriate conversation for school committee to be having publicly. I think that, you know, this is a really important thing in our city. And the role of Stanley and Michelle tonight is to provide information and to answer questions, so that school committee can make a good decision, much like other school committees are making across the state. That's the reason that we invited them here tonight, to be able to share that. I don't think that there is a recommendation yet. I think we want to be able to see over the next several weeks what is happening within the league, what is also happening with the virus, to know whether any or all of what is being presented is even an option. But I think it's these conversations that are really important for bodies to have, because ultimately, we're all the decision-makers in this. So for that, I thank Stanley and Michelle for coming and bringing something up that is both controversial, but could also potentially be beneficial, to decide, to, to help you give, get the information, so that we can collectively make a good decision on behalf of the young people of our city.
Is there a follow-up to that, first of all?
Yes.
Could it be more, Superintendent, I do want to echo the thanks to Stanley and Michelle. I know you guys are working your butt off to make, to make it as safe as possible. And if there's a safe way to do this, I'm sure you will find it. I admit that I am skeptical of the safe way to do it, but I am, that is not a suspicion on you guys at all. To that end, is that, is that information, information in, in advance of our next meeting, what decision that you made on this, if we could get the protocols in writing publicly, it would be, not just. if we could get the protocols in writing publicly, it would be, not just for us, but we know what other districts are doing, that'd be incredibly helpful taking the decisions.
Great suggestion.
Yeah, I'll send everything to, I'll, I'll send everything to Superintendent Skipper and make sure she, she gets it all to all of you. I promise. Thank you.
Santiago will do that very quickly. He'll get all the information.
Yes, and, uh, also I will contact, uh, Rich Raish about, hopefully he will be feeling better very soon, um, asking for information on the ratings of the other buildings. Ms. Paton has a question and with that, that will be the last one and then we will resume. We'll go back to the agenda and public comment. Ms. Paton?
Yeah, so, um, just to quickly, so Stanley mentioned testing, so I guess I didn't hear that in the beginning. So there's a plan to do surveillance testing with, okay, so weekly for students, is that?
Yeah, so we would fold, uh, three men chair, sorry. Um, we would fold, we would fold the athletes into, um, or, or just as we would community schools, fold the students that are participating into a regular testing sequence. Um, this is, this is going to be the most complex part, but also the most important part is that we're not over testing students, but that we're testing students so that we know what's happening with the virus.
And that is that when, um, Mr. Vera talks about having to stop, that's based on what we find during the testing, correct? Or there are other characteristics that would, what other circumstances that would drive the, um, programming to stop?
Yeah, I, I mean, not just testing on our part, but testing for other schools in the GBL. As we're playing just grade of Boston League schools, I might get a phone call from the Malden Athletic Director that says, hey, we played you on, on Saturday, but one of our kids tested positive, you know, so obviously that, that all our schools involved, uh, will be impacted, uh, with potential quarantine, uh, over so many days, 10 days, if, um, there's a positive case.
Ms. Kelly, did you want to jump in?
Thank you. Um, we are also screening the kids for symptoms daily and asking them if they have been in contact with anybody uh, with COVID-19 since their prior, uh, practice. Um, so if anyone presents any symptoms, um, we will shut down for 24 hours at the minimum to figure out if they have COVID, the flu, whatever it may be. Uh, we're also, um, trying very hard to promote, um, if you are sick for any reason, whether it's, um, strep throat or, you know, a sore throat or, or an air infection, stay home. We don't want anybody there that is sick in any regard. Um, so we are taking other preventive measures, um, to monitor symptoms, uh, so we can shut down if there are symptoms, uh, before we have testing results.
And I just wanted to close on one. Thank you so much, all of you for being here. Um, just to follow up to, um, Superintendent Skipper through your chair Norman. So there's going to be some recommendation made from your administrative office saying whether or not you really want to move forward with this or not, correct? And then we will discuss it in the follow-up meeting.
Correct. Next, next, at the next SC, we will take the information that we have and make our best recommendation. And again, that may be an all, or it may be a nothing, or it may be a some, depending on GBL, depending on what's happening with the virus, depending on how comfortable we are. Some of the questions that were asked tonight about things like the hockey and the hockey rink and, um, in the Kennedy pool, we will have to ask those questions of the city. We don't have that information handedly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So with that, I would ask my colleagues, uh, if there are any additional pieces of information or questions uh, over the next week or so, uh, to get them to me so that we can have all the information to make the best informed decision at the December 21st, uh, school committee meeting. I, I, I do want to thank you both for joining us and box and I would, um, however this plays out, I would also encourage you as, uh, to think about the spring as much as you have the fall, especially as we learn, um, how buildings are going to be used and, and how the high school in particular be used. So for many of our high school students, this is their only interaction, uh, in person. Uh, for all the obvious reasons, but it's also very important and I would, my heart really goes out to all of our students, but in particularly our seniors who have lived through more years of construction than any other grade. They lost their spring and they potentially will not be in person for their, uh, a majority, if not all of their senior year. So, obviously safety is the number one thing, but I would encourage you and we look forward to seeing you, uh, talking more about the winter sports, but, uh, you know, uh, we're looking forward to the spring too. So thank you both for always putting safety first, but also considering the physical and emotional needs of our students. Superintendent Skipper, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that Principal Laganbina is here at the meeting tonight. Um, even though he didn't speak, he's here and, um, he will be working as well with, uh, myself and with Stanley and with Michelle to process the information that comes in.
That is a good point and, uh, I can also note that there are a number of other coaches who are also in attendance tonight, uh, as well as parents, uh, concerned about this. So thank you all. Uh, and we look forward to continuing this discussion. I also want to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful and frank uh, questions and comments tonight. So.
Everyone for everything and a speedy recovery to Mayor Cretetown.
Thank you so much.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
And with that, uh, we will now resume our, uh, agenda. Good night, Michelle. Good to see you. Uh, uh, item number three at, you know, eight 30, uh, approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion for, to approve the minutes of August 10th, 2020, please?
This is Emily, so I'm moved.
This is there, again. There is a motion by Dr. Ackman, seconded by Dr. Phillips. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Discription?
Yes.
President McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Cretetony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yes.
Ms. Paton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that. We're now on to item number four and I want to, uh, thank the public for their patience that tonight's, uh, citywide updates went on, uh, much more extensively than typically, uh, what happens. And just remembered, uh, so before public comment, here's the spiel. Uh, welcome and thank you to those of you who have signed up for public comment. Speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. I'm going to allow you to your full three minutes. Remarks should be respectful, professional and addressed through the chair. If a speaker persists in improper remarks, the chair may terminate that individual's right to continue. Public comment is not a discussion, debate or a dialogue between residents and the committee. Members of the committee will not reply to public comment in the course of a meeting. Though individual members may follow up and items from public comment may be taken up in future meetings. The school committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any member of the school committee in public session, school community, excuse me. Uh, individuals may address topics on the agenda or either, or items within the school committee's scope or a responsibility such as the district budget, goals and policies or the rules superintendent. And as always, we encourage the public to submit their comments in writing to be included in the public record. So tonight, uh, we have two speakers. We have Kinga Berande and then Ale Conti Field. Kinga, the floor is yours.
Hi, Kinga Berandi, 14 Lander Street, Somerville. Our social compact, the accord between the people and their freely elected government has been broken. If the true function of government is to tend to the health and welfare of its citizens, then our federal government has failed us miserably. Our friends, neighbors, relatives are dying in a manner and at a rate that is terrifying. This death rate, 282,000 and counting, now more than 1,000 a day, could have been mitigated by a centralized coherent response to the virus that threatens us all. The federal government could have coordinated an effort to stem the rapid transmission to alleviate the pain and suffering caused by the endless. And by subsidizing with direct cash payments, those who cannot work from home, it could have and should have alleviated the pain and suffering of the financial loss of COVID-19 precipitated. Other governments have stepped up. Australia offers residents $1,993 a month. France and Germany more than 7,000. Even Ireland sends residents more than 3,000. We received $1,200 in the spring, a one-time payment. Andre Green agrees. You tweeted it out November 3rd. Pay people to stay home, pay businesses to stay closed, pay essential workers as if they were essential. A centralized and coordinated message, a steady supply chain stimulus relief that takes into account the, the real needs of the people. A mingled, a single message about prevention could have saved lives, yet our government has disengaged, has engaged in a disinformation campaign. So let's, let's not call it that. It's a campaign of lies and falsehoods that will kill us all. Let us join our voices to clamor for what we really need, a coherent public policy, health, public health policy, free and accessible healthcare and unbroken supply chain that assures communities they will receive the supplies they need and financial relief for all residents of the United States regardless of citizen, citizen status. But here we are in December, the failure of the federal government has pitted us against each other. Parents blaming teachers for not opening schools, administrators pitted against union members, families pitted against each other as we die from this campaign of falsehoods. As we wrangle over in-person teaching, a return to business as usual, we are fighting against each other rather than taking those truly at fault to task. Let us not ignore the increasing evidence that children are susceptible to the virus and are a factor in its transmission. Mayor Joe, you tweeted that out on November 19th, an article from Commonwealth Magazine. Transmission in Cambridge public schools jumped from 16 in-person staff to 22 free Thanksgiving, including two children who were infected by adult staff. Framingham has also reported in school transmissions and will continue remote teaching through the end of the year. Administrators there say that there is no mechanism to report, uh, in-school transmissions to Desi. This begs the question, how many in-school infections are acceptable to Somerville School Committee? How many long-term disabilities and how many deaths? Thank you.
King, uh, excuse me, the next up is Ale Conti Field. Ale, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Kinga Berande seems to have just covered the macro, so my comment is much more micro. Um, my name is Ale Contini Field. I live at 215 Summer Street and I have a first grader at Winter Hill. And I also have a three-year-old in full-time daycare also in Somerville. Um, I realize that we are in a major surge and that the opportunities for safe in-person interaction between young children are few and far between. Um, my son has had very positive and safe outdoor recess through community schools in the fall, two days a week. Uh, his program seems to be undersubscribed. It's five students to two teachers on the two days that he is assigned. I recently asked if he could be enrolled for four days a week, which would be Monday, Tuesday and Thursday and Friday off of his assigned cohort, weather permitting, but I was told that community schools has to follow the hybrid cohorts that were determined in September. And he's only eligible for the 230 to 430 block on the two days that are assigned to his cohort. Uh, I've been following school reopening closely and it seems that the timeline for his age group, which is first grade, uh, doesn't see him entering the school before March. And my question is whether the small population of students that does benefit from community schools, which is a paid program, it's two hours a day, it's all outside right now. They only do it when the weather is decent. Um, if the hybrid nature of that could be reconsidered, since there is no hybrid and there never was hybrid and hybrid is a joke, until March at the earliest. Um, if you could allow students like him to attend programming four days or five days a week, I think it would benefit them a lot. If we could find a way to get them into a gym, that would probably be better. But if not, I would take outside masked play in January. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, next item is item number four, reported to Superintendent.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just, just a couple of quick things. Uh, just wanted to say that we're really fortunate to have a number of community partners who go above and beyond to support our students and families, particularly families who may be struggling as we enter the holiday season and the cold winter months. The Ryan Harrington Foundation is one of these partners. Now, for the past several years, the Ryan Harrington Foundation has provided SPS families with Thanksgiving baskets that are filled with a full array of traditional Thanksgiving food items so that their entire household can enjoy, um, a Thanksgiving meal during this time. Um, this year, the foundation was able to donate 51 of these baskets to our families. Um, the baskets included a turkey, the traditional side dishes, a delicious dessert and items to prepare and serve the meal. Um, we're just really thankful for all of our partners and in particular, um, at this time for the Ryan Harrington Foundation, for all that they do for our families. Um, you shout out, uh, for our Somerville High School National Honor Society students who, along with the Somerville High staff members Cynthia Masalon and Veronica Rollinson, um, also made sure that some of our families had something to celebrate this holiday season. Um, our students, uh, student reps actually brought this up earlier. Um, the group held a successful Thanksgiving drive for non-perishable food items and monetary donations. They were able to provide meal kits directly to our families, uh, food to the local pantry and about $1,300 to support the Claritin and Mystic Housing, um, authority toy drive. So thank you to everyone that was involved, uh, to our National Honor Society teacher leaders, as well as to the students and all of the staff for giving back to our community. Um, shout out for and reminder for the Somerville High School College and Career Readiness Team. Um, they'll be offering a series of virtual college and career planning events for our juniors this year. All events are for the students and their parents and guardians. The series kicked off last month with the general college and career planning overview. Uh, next on the schedule is introduction to college basics workshop, which students can participate in either on December 16th, at noon or on January 14th at 7:30 PM. Uh, 11th grade students will receive an email with login information prior to each of the events. And, um, if students or parents are looking for information, they can visit the Somerville High School College and Career website, um, where there's more information and a listing of the workshops. Um, in terms of other workshops, the SFLC and the National Campaign for Financial Literacy will be holding a free financial literacy virtual workshop in Spanish tomorrow evening, Tuesday, the 8th, from 7:30 until 9:00 PM. Participants will learn and understand strategies to improve their finances and build a solid financial foundation. Uh, the workshop presenters are from the National Campaign for Financial Literacy. Um, interested families can contact Francia Reyes, um, at her email, which is listed on our website, SFLC, uh, for more information about the event. Um, eligible, uh, Somerville High students in both their junior and senior year, 11th and 12th graders, who speak English and a second language are encouraged to apply once again through Massachusetts Seal of Bio Literacy. The seal can be useful for college admissions or for future employment opportunities. Students have until the end of the month, 7/31st to apply. They can email, um, Mrs. Macnic, our world language advisor, at her email with questions and it's also on our website. Um, and that again is the Massachusetts Seal of Bio Literacy. Uh, that does conclude my report for this evening, Chair.
Thank you for that, Superintendent Skipper. There are a number of reports listed and, uh, so first I'm going to ask, uh, Ms. Paton. I think you have two ed program, uh, report outs. If you could do both of them at the same time and then we'll go to Ms. Cruppin with the Subcommittee of Personnel and then to Mr. Green. The floor is your.
Sorry, a little informal. All right. So I'm going to share from the last two educational programs and instruction subcommittee, the first meeting was, um, the first meeting we had since February, the educational programs, um, made the decision to not meet during the, the height of the planning of the pandemic. It was hard to have these conversations that were kind of strategic and big picture when we were trying, working so hard to support our students. So that was just some context. The first meeting, um, in, talked about, um, the high school health program redesign, update on the MX2 math program and some planning for future ed programs. Um, so, uh, I'm trying to make this as quick as possible. So several years ago, there was, um, some feedback, uh, for many years about the high school health programming and, um, our advisor, our director, I'm sorry, our supervisor of health and physical education, Sheila Fredis Haley, um, was asked to make recommendations to how to enhance and improve the programming. We did an overhaul in the district of our fourth through eighth grade program about three years ago, dramatically changing and enhancing, as well as hiring a professional health educator to deliver that programming, um, which they're calling the middle grades program. It starts at fourth grade. They use, they get, uh, real, the HealthSmart and the Life Skills curriculum. They also added in this elementary program, the LGBTQ panels that were piloted at the middle grades. They first did it with some educators and then most recently last year, they did it with some high school students in a couple of our schools and it was very well received.
in a couple of our schools, and it was very well received. So they wanted to learn from the enhancements that were made to the middle grades programming and apply that to the high school programming. They're currently using something called Glencoe Health Curriculum, and they're adding their own supplemental curriculum. And Somerville was really looking for something new that was a cultural fit, which explicitly covered emotional health, affirmative consent, opioids, vaping, gender identity. And the recommendation was to adopt the Health Smart curriculum for Somerville High School, which is currently used by our middle grades. They was brought forward a pilot program, proposed for 21, 22. But the question came out, if we've had such a good experience with the program in the middle grades, why would we pilot it? Why don't we just launch the program full-on? Is this a money question? And Ms. Freitas Haley said she would go back and look into it and talk to administration about the option for full launch. Understanding that if there's reasons why to do a pilot, totally understand, but if we already have good experience with this program, why not recommend that we launch it fully? They also, she also discussed an evolving partnership with C H A to add some augmented sexual reproductive health programming using something called Proud Choices Curriculum, as well as working with a Spanish-speaking health educator and creating summer program to increase access to health programming for our C T E students. Apparently, there was some conflict in schedules between C T E student schedules and accessing either language or a health class. So it created a conflict, so offering some summer programming. The last thing that she shared was that there was a grant for a queer and gender equity project. And that work, that project has been launched with the goal of creating a positive culture and safe spaces for LGBTQ students plus students, as well as professional development for educators. There was some interest in the school committee about expanding these programs with the parent and garden population as well. And we see some suggestions about collaborating either with S F L C or P T A Council. And then, just as a reference, the new school committee wellness policy that was adopted maybe a year and a half ago also includes health education programming for our pre-K to third grades. So one of the reasons why, I think, from my own perspective, why it makes sense to roll out the high school stuff sooner rather than later is to actually be able to expend some energy and create programming for our youngest students in Somerville. So we look forward to in a future report out what recommendations are going to be made to roll out programming and what type of resources we'd need to support our pre-K to third grade students. The second item on that agenda was the MX2 Accelerated Math Path for eighth grade students that was put on hold this year. As a result of, let's see. We used to have a program that was set up informally through one of the schools where some students would complete and accelerate their geometry during eighth grade so they could take algebra in ninth grade, which is traditionally a 10th grade class. This got formalized in a program called MX2. Unfortunately, Equity Task Force brought up some concerns about the population of students, which did not represent the demographics of the district and the accessibility of the program to all students. So as designed, the MX2 program, which was again to accelerate students to complete geometry before the end of the eighth grade, included after-school sessions that some students weren't able to participate in. Although there's a calculus project program, that's a separate program to create pathways for students of color and low-income students to complete AP Calculus in high school, the adoption of this program has not resulted in an increase in the end of representation of student participation in MX2. So a decision was made to pause the MX2 program for the 2021 school year. Assistant Superintendent Maza had met with a bunch of concerned parents about the origin of the change and the future plans. And the proposal is to stopgap for MX2, which is the district is creating a pilot for an online geometry course available to all students. There's going to be a small working group that include eighth grade and geometry educators to create proper supports for students interested in the online course, which may include things like tutoring, such as older high school students and a pacing guide. And then the eighth grade educators were making recommendations for students who might be ready and interested in the pilot program. They've already identified approximately 85 students, and they expect about 50 to 60 students to participate. The goal for this program is to begin in December. And so I guess I could get an update or not from the superintendent. And any parents who, her students were not referred to this pilot program, can they, they can reach out to Superintendent Maza. There's also plans to create a working group to address a long-term vision for math in the district. This would include a curriculum review and focus on math for all students, not just a subset of students. The group would include educators from both the high school and K to eights. And the last item on this agenda, we talked about future educational programs and instruction meeting plans. We had a plan for the entire year, obviously, that got superseded by COVID efforts. So we're working to just prioritize and align on what we want to cover over the next several meetings and the next year. Things floated included changes at the high school and Full Circle Next Wave, do the Bar Foundation work, which is all about reimagining high school and competency-based assessments. Some preliminary thinking about hybrid learning, successes with remote learning, and plan for the guidance program at Somerville High School based on a program review that happened last year, reviewing handbooks, as well as social, emotional, and trauma-informed learning. We agreed to finalize planning for the next meeting. That's the completion of my report for the October, sorry, yes, October 27, 2020 meeting. Do you want me to just roll in the next one before I make a motion?
Please.
Okay. And the next one, a little shorter. This is the meeting from November 18, 2020. We had two items on the agenda, following up on the programs meeting planning, as well as consideration of student school handbooks. We talked about this. We talked about School Improvement Council reports. So usually, as part of ed programs, we review the School Improvement Council reports and plans. And it was acknowledged that, you know, everything changed with the pandemic. And the expectation is that it's going to be happening again, maybe in the late winter, early spring, with a particular focus on equity plans. There was an interest in an update on district-wide equity assessments and planning, but the suggestion was this should come at a future meeting with the full school committee. In addition to the school improvement plans, we talked about the Guidance Department update, feedback on remote learning experience in general from families, students, and teachers. So we talked about the challenge of trying to reach a broad population of families and that anecdotal information from the calls that liaisons have been making with families would be very valuable. Talked about possibly a focus group or town hall, but then there was concerns regarding the capacity of the district to collect and report on findings on remote learning and how it might actually be used to improve remote learning. So I think I already started a conversation, this is a side note with the Chair, about, you know, what kind of follow-up we might want to do with this. Another item that was very high on the list was an update on social, emotional learning and in-trauma-informed practices in our schools, particularly in the context of the challenges associated with the pandemic and remote learning for students. Discussed about this might be an opportunity to communicate about hybrid learning, though it probably should be covered in regular meetings. Updates on families that are interested in returning via the hybrid plan, as well as demographics. Again, thought this should be covered in that regular meeting. And then updates from community schools, recreation, as well as city coordinator Jose Mendez as a starting point for our out-of-school time update. An update on family engagement, the S F L C with their new roles and their longer-term vision. And we discussed the reimagining of high school, as well as the changes, enhancements to Full Circle Next Wave. Last item we discussed was the alternative assessment of qualities, which is part of the consortium with the M C I E A that would be possibly in the spring or fall. And then the last item was the school and student handbooks. As part of our, being a school committee, we're responsible for policy, and handbooks are considered an extension of policy. We discussed how to incorporate this in our practice, talking about the fact that school committee, I'm sorry, that's handbooks, online expectations for parents and staff, including how schools operate, rules, attendance, and grading support. And the goal is to approve changes moving forward, as well as making sure that our handbooks are aligned with our school committee policies. School committee policy is the umbrella. Handbooks are the details about actually how it gets implemented in schools. There were some questions about what is required to be in the handbook, and Mr. Maza, as well as myself, are going to follow up on those and setting aside time in ed programs to approve handbooks. In our next meeting, there was discussion of having table of contents of handbooks samples from both the high school and K to eight schools. So that is enclosed my report for both the November 18th and the October 27th meeting. I would like to make a motion to accept these two reports of the Educational Program Subcommittee.
This is Emily, second.
Here's a motion by Mrs. Batone, second in. Is there any questions or discussions on those two reports? Get a roll call vote to accept them, please.
Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Kupchan?
Yeah.
Ms. McGlaughlin? May I occur to Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Barish?
Yes.
Ms. Batone?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Before we go to Ms. Kupchan, Mr. Green. Yes.
Ms. McGlaughlin here. I just want to be recorded as a yes.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good to hear your voice. Mr. Green, I would ask, given that you have finance next week, if you could report out on last month's and this month's finance at the December 21st Full Circle Committee. Thank you for that accommodation. Ms. Kupchan, so Ms. Kupchan has been chairing a very, jumped in with both feet and then some. We are in the process of hiring, doing a job search to replace our lawyer, attorney Mike, hiring, and will be with us through the end of this school calendar year. I will say, Ms. Kupchan, chairing the Personnel Subcommittee along with her colleagues, Ms. Batone and Ms. Barish, have been meeting often at 7:30. I think you had four 7:30 meetings last week. The time that works well for the lawyers and for us. And I want to thank you all for that work. There has been, I don't know, six meetings. You have six reports. But given that this process is moving along at a good clip, I'm going to ask you to just report out, if you can sort of consolidate all of what's been happening, what you see the steps are. And then take care of the minutes. Actually, minutes get approved at the subcommittees. I'm going to put out a quick explanation of the mechanics of all of this because it's new to a lot of our members. But Ms. Kupchan, if you could share with us the work you've done and where you expect us to go in the next few weeks?
Yes, I will give you a quick update and then answer questions from colleagues, if there may be any. So basically, we had two planning meetings that were myself, Ms. Batone, and Ms. Barish, along with Mary Skipper was at one of them. We had Joe Tringoli at all of them. We had our current attorney, Mike Long, at one of them. And we basically had a detailed conversation about what we're looking for, what we've had in the past, what we expect to be paying for it in the future. And coming out of that, we came to the conclusion that we definitely need a firm to replace Mike Long in the near future. And that going forward, we may want to consider also having an in-house lawyer. And there are a number of reasons for potentially having both. But in the immediate, we definitely need a firm to represent us. So with that assumption, we brought in four firms that came highly recommended from the M A S D to do an initial interview. And at the end of those four, they were all fabulous attorneys, which I sort of expected to happen, given how highly recommended they came. We were not, the idea was to bring two of those firms to the full school committee. But we really liked so many of them. We're hoping to bring three firms to the full school committee so that we can all ask detailed questions and be able to see them another time before we make this important decision. So to that end, if everyone's looking forward to more early morning meetings, hoping to get three interviews in maybe starting as early as the end of this week or next week, depending on our schedule and the lawyer's schedule. Hoping to keep them to 45 minutes-ish. In the handouts are the list of the questions that we asked in our first interview. Would love to see us change those up a little for this follow-up interview. So if my colleagues have ideas of questions they would like to ask, if you could send them to me, and I will consolidate them so that we have a list. And that is where we stand.
Thank you so much for the work that you've done. That is an incredibly concise report, given the amount of work you have done in the last. Any school committee members have questions or comments for Ms. Kupchan as to what work has been done so far and where we expect to go, Mr. Green?
Just because I would love to know, do we interview? Or is it available, the longer version of your report is available somewhere? To your view?
Yeah.
Great. Where?
I would say by Wednesday. It's certainly, or possibly by the end of the day tomorrow. There, I mean, Ms. Kupchan did an incredible job. There's just, there were a few last names missing, sort of things that would have taken us a very long time to approve them. So it's some quick housekeeping that it would take long at all to get those out.
I am, that I would just love, before we do the interview, to give us a little bit of time to step back on.
Absolutely. Yes. I, Ms. Barish, then, Ms. Phillips?
I hope it's okay for me to just comment that Alana has been really terrific throughout this process and always leaves us with action points and leads us through really efficient meetings. And I just want to express my gratitude.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Phillips?
Yeah, first, thanks to Ms. Kupchan and to everybody on the committee. You guys have been working very hard, many early mornings. So thank you. I just didn't understand what role those of us who aren't on the committee are to play in the interviewing. Is the idea that we should come to some of these early morning interviews later in the week? Or is the idea that you're going to bring folks to the next school committee meeting?
Sorry, I wasn't clear. The idea was that these would be personnel committees of the whole and that we would get, now, if everybody can't come, you know, obviously, that may happen. But we have, hope to have a quorum of the school committee at these, and they would be considered a full school committee.
Thanks.
And then there would be another Personnel Committee of the whole for us to deliberate and to actually vote on a firm?
Correct.
Are there any other?
To that end, just since we're actually all here, as opposed to various emails or texts tomorrow, could everyone let me know when you are or are not available in terms of early morning meetings, the rest later in this week and next week? You don't have to tell me right now, but just shoot me an email, send me a text, whatever's easiest, so that we can figure that out.
That would be helpful, but also in the, I believe that there has been information about the firms that have been shared. The names of the firms have been shared and in the Personnel folder. And then, Ms. Kupchan, just for the benefit of the public, could you list the four firms that you have interviewed so far so that?
I sure can. Let me just look at it before I mess anything up.
Thank you.
So we talked to Elizabeth Valerio and Nick Domanello from Valerio, Domanello, and Hillman. We talked to James Pender from Morgan, Brown, and Joy. We talked to Michelle McNulty and Paige Tobin We talked to Michelle McNulty and Paige Tobin at Murphy, Lemare, and Murphy. And we talked to Andrew Wa, Michael Macaro, and Felicia Vassadavian at Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane.
Thank you. And what are the three firms that you would like to put forward for a second round of interviews?
We would like to put forward for our second interview, Valerio, Domanello, and Hillman, Murphy, Lemare, and Murphy, and Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lehane.
Thank you for that. Are there any additional questions from school committee members or comments?
Just to clarify, all of the background information, biographies, resumes, et cetera, that each firm provided are in the Personnel Subcommittee folder in the Google Drive for that date.
Okay. Thank you so much for that, and thank you for that. I guess the report, and can you make a motion to accept the report?
But we're not, we're not doing the reports yet, right?
Right.
Or you want?
Oh, thank you. I, I'm sorry, my son is upstairs recording, he's with, I don't know if he's with Ms. Mosby, but there is a holiday concert going on suddenly upstairs, and it is hard for me to hear, so, and to concentrate, so thank you so much for that. So that concludes the report of the subcommittees. Onto new business, item number seven. First up is the M.A.C. Delegate Assembly Report, Mr. Green.
Yes, thank you, although I think this was trying to get your attention.
Oh, no, that's okay. I just, I wanted to follow up. Ms. Peton had actually asked a question as part of her notes for ed programs. First, I just wanted to say that Mr. Mazza would be here. As you know, he lost his dad last weekend to an illness, and so our thoughts are with him. But we did speak about the geometry, and there are fifty-one students that are enrolled in it. It did begin on December 2. There's an actual teacher that is functioning as like a lead teacher, along with some tutors, and for the first time, some behind mentors. So there's a really good structure around the program. They've had at least one, if not two, parent meetings with the students, so I think it's off to a good start.
Thank you for the update. It's sometimes hard to read reports back from October when we're moving so quickly. Thank you for that catch. Mr. Green, the M.A.C. Delegate Report.
Yes, so the M.A.C., National Association of School Committees, met for their first-ever virtual General Assembly Annual Meeting on Saturday, November 7th at 1:00 p.m. There were one hundred and forty-three, generally representing one hundred and forty-three school districts, so the town of Wells, I represent Somerville. They, I will, you know, skip all the Warren stuff, but this year had the first contested election for M.A.C. officer, we believe, in M.A.C. history in seventy-five years. That was an election, yeah. There was a contest election for president-elect, so the president-elect for 2021 will be the president come 2022. And that election was won by Enfield Wadsworth, Southern Berkshire County, I want to say. I'm going to vote a sixty-nine, fifty-one. I voted for this one, Chris Wadsworth. There were ten, there were ten resolutions, as were shared with this committee beforehand, up for discussion. I, this committee gave me authority to make judgment, although all ten, all ten resolutions were issues which basically stand on the pass favorably, so I went in, proposed to endorse all ten of them. Five of those resolutions were passed, you asked in the lab discussion, those were resolutions calling for state's funding for COVID, anti-racial resolution, retention of medical revenue, membership of a school committee member on the Board of Education, and equity for LGBTQ students and staff. Those agendas were all passed unanimously. There was a resolution to call for a, to call for a one-year moratorium on the MCAS, given the realities of COVID, as well as still allowing students to, the tenth-grade students who were good at last year to stay, to remain, to, to, to take the, the tenth-grade MCAS. The Beverly School Committee moved to table that resolution, therefore killing it. That move table was defeated twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the resolution was passed by a vote of one-twelve to nine, two extensions, some were voted in favor. There was a resolution to lower the voting age to sixteen until elections. After much deliberation, that resolution also passed, fifty-five to forty-nine, with four extensions, Somerville again voted affirmative. There was a resolution to support for increased federal support for stimulus funding for public education. The, remember, the Fannie Hens School Committee, strike the words, quote, "through the enactment of progressive tax legislation," in quote, as they appear at the end of the paragraph, that resolution passed, that amendment passed seventy-two to twenty-eight. I was one of the twenty-eight knows. I believe that it's important to be clear that to get revenue needed to address this crisis, we needed to, uh, pursue progressive taxation. But even though that was struck, I voted for the amendment, the resolution that passed, which passed at one-seventeen oh one. There was a resolution about the attempts, the recent attempts from the Department of Education to direct public funding from CARE Act to private schools. That motion was tabled by, the motion was, a motion to table was moved by the Beverly School Committee again. That motion did not pass, thirty-four, seventy-one. I voted against the motion to table. I voted in favor of the resolution, was passed one way to six points. And finally, there was a resolution about the attendance policy during the pandemic. I'm actually, and this one actually, there was a motion made to table this resolution, a motion I voted against, but that motion to table resolution, therefore killing it, passed, and voted seventy-one or thirty-four. So nine, nine of the amendments passed, we voted, we voted in favor of all of them. I think it's a fairly progressive slate of resolutions, I wish all ten passed.
Well, Mr. Green, thank you again for representing us, whether it was in person and years past, or virtually remotely, as you did this year. I, Superintendent Skipper, can you just say, there's a lot of questions about MCAS for both this year's juniors who were tenth graders when the schools closed, and also this current year's tenth graders. Can you give us what the current, currently where Desi is at on this, these questions?
They just put out some guidance today around twelfth grade science and being able to, for the senior class, being able to use those that haven't passed science MCAS to complete their CD, the competency determination, to use one of their courses, one of their science, applicable science courses. They've extended the window on access testing from January now through to May, which is a big help, because that frankly is going to be very difficult for urban districts to accomplish. The juniors' window has now moved to May for the testing. Previously, there had been an option for January. We had decided that it would make, there was, there was, there was no negative piece to just waiting for, for the kids to be able to take it in May, and so they've now decided at a state level to be able to do that. So that's the information that we currently have. I'm sure Mr. Mazza will update, as he normally does, on the testing at the next school committee through memo, but that was kind of fresh off the press today. I do, I do expect that there will continue to be updates coming, you know, from Desi, and we'll share those, but the access was, was, was definitely one thing that we were thinking, how could we, you know, have six, seven, eight hundred students come in to test for? So that is, yeah, that is refreshing news that that will now go off until May.
Thank you for that update. There is also under new business donations, and I would entertain a motion.
I move.
Oh, go ahead.
Can someone make a motion, please?
This is Eleanor. I move to accept with gratitude the following donations. From Hillary Holloway of Somerville, Massachusetts, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Healy School Community Clothing Closet, and from Darryl Turner of Denver, Colorado, two hundred and fifty dollars for the Healy School Community Clothing Closet.
Is there a second?
Second, this is Sarah.
Thank you so much. There is a motion by Ms. Barish, seconded by Dr. Phillips. Any discussion? Can we get a roll call vote, please, Ms. Superintendent Skipper?
Certainly. Dr. Phillips?
Yes.
Crouppen?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mayor Curdito, Tony? Mr. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Barish?
Yes.
Peton?
Yes.
Dr. Ackman?
Yes.
Ms. Norman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank you to those generous donors to helping out with the clothing closet. It really matters this winter more than ever. Are there any items from board members? Dr. Phillips?
This is just a friendly reminder to those of you who RSVP'd. We have a meeting with Teen Empowerment's New Crop of Youth organizers tomorrow at four-thirty. If you've lost the Zoom link, let me know, and I will share it with you.
Thank you again for setting that up. It's always a joy to be able to see our students and our young adults. So I will, I mean, unable to join you, I will be at the Shore Collaborative Board Meeting representing us, but enjoy that, because that is always a lively and interesting discussion. Ms. Crouppen?
So since we're here and we have Matt McLaughlin with us, I was curious to know if his charter review that is happening, does that have somebody from the school committee by nature of the board, or if one of us is interested in doing it, should we apply in the regular way that has gone out in public?
That is a fantastic. Mr. McLaughlin, would you like to take that?
I would, thank you. Yes, very excited that the city has announced today that we're going to start the charter review process, and thanks for the advocacy of your chair as well. There will be a school committee rep, as well as two community reps selected by the school committee chair. So that went out today. The deadline, I believe, is December 24th, so I encourage people to, have people submit applications, because it's a big opportunity to have some systemic change in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you for that question. Thank you for that, Mr. McLaughlin. So, yes, so that will, we're making that announcement of the, who will represent the school committee, and also the picking of our community members in December. Are there any other items from board members? Dr. Ackman, are there condolences?
There's one. The Somerville School Committee would like to extend its deepest condolences to the family of William Carlo, retired utility aide for Somerville Public Schools, and husband of Kathy Carlo, retired Somerville High School secretary.
We are adjourned. Roll call vote?
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, this is Laura.
No, we don't need that. We don't need.
In a secondary session, we need a motion to adjourn. Everything is, a roll call vote in public session, the chair can call a meeting to order and to us to adjourn. So with that, that's fine, it's a team effort, and I appreciate everyone thinking of the details. With that, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thanks for joining us.